Good evening.
That could be Joe Vayuso with the hand raised?
Probably.
Probably, I don't have his phone number memorized.
Yes, it is Joe Vayuso.
Oh, hi, Joe.
Hi, Michelle.
All right, we're at seven. We're just waiting.
We ready?
Let me just make sure you got co-hosts.
Do we have Sharon? Yeah, there she is, okay.
Like Sharon, Marcy, Joe.
Do you see Dave?
Joe. Dave, I don't see. I don't see Dave.
Hmm. Well, maybe he'll pop on.
Okay, well, when we get to asking for who's gonna vote on what?
Recording in progress.
Right.
Okay, you think we should begin?
Yep.
Okay, then let's begin. Good evening and welcome to the Branford Planning, Zoning and Commission. It's the meeting September fourth, two thousand twenty-five at seven P M. My name is Fred Russo and I'm the Secretary of the P and Z, and I am substituting for our Chairman Chuck Andre Stein. First, I would like to introduce members of the Branford Planning and Zoning Commission and ask each of them to acknowledge their presence as their name is called. Joe Vayuso.
Joe Vayuso is here.
Joe Chadwick.
Joe Chadwick is present.
Marcy Paluzzi.
Marcy's here.
Sharon Hutner.
Sharon Hutner is here.
David Dyer. I don't think David's here. And I'm Fred Russo. I also would like to introduce the members of our Branford Planning and Zoning Office and ask each of them to acknowledge their presence as their name is called. Our Director of Planning and Zoning, Mikhail Whackers.
Here.
Our Assistant Town Planner, Dan Robinson.
Here.
Our Recording Secretary, Michelle Martin, who is taking notes at a remote location. Michelle, are you with us?
Yes, I am.
Okay. Okay, so our meeting format is as follows. The applicant goes first and presents relevant information pertaining to the application. Staff reports will be discussed by staff members of the Planning and Zoning Office in reference to that application. Commissioner will be asked for their comment commentary concerning the application. Public commentary will then follow, and then the applicant is then allowed to respond to any questions raised during the public hearing. Once all testimony is completed, a public hearing can either be closed or continued depending on the circumstances of the meeting itself. I'd like to have our Town Planner read the legal notices. I normally do that, but serving as the role I am tonight, I would ask him to do that. So Mikhail, if you could please read the public notices.
Certainly. So Mikhail Whackers, Town Planner, a legal notice, Town of Branford, the Planning and Zoning Commission of the Town of Branford, Connecticut hereby give this notice. Public hearings to be held on Thursday, September fourth, two thousand twenty-five at seven P M. By remote technology to consider applications listed below. Information regarding on how to participate in the public hearings will be provided on the Commissioner's meeting agenda and will be posted on the town's website at least twenty-four hours prior to the meeting. Application one, twenty-five dash six point six, special exception for summer camp located at one oh three Cherry Hill Road. John and Yvette Chambers, applicants and owners. Two, application number twenty-five dash seven point one, zoning regulation amendment to sections two point two, four point eight L, and seven point twenty B to add cannabis establishment micro cultivator. Christopher Russo, Esquire applicant. Three, application twenty-five dash seven point two, special exception for an animal shelter for cats located at fifty-three East Industrial Road, Unit One. A chance for love rescue, Inc., care of Adrian Anna Pepe, applicant, Padula LLC owner. Four, applicant number twenty-five dash seven point three, zoning map amendment incentive housing overlay district, IHOD at two hundred and thirty East Main Street. Sharista Management LLC, applicant owner. Five, application number twenty-five dash seven point four, special exception to construct six residential units located at two hundred and thirty East Main Street, Sharista Management LLC, applicant owner. At said hearings, all persons have the right to be heard. Copies are on file in the Planning and Zoning Commission Office at the Planning and Zoning Department. Ten nineteen Main Street, Branford, Connecticut, oh six four oh five. Written communications may be sent to the above address or to planning and zoning at branford-ct.gov.
Thank you, Mikhail. Mikhail, can I ask you also to give us some information on, for the general public to, how to interact with our Zoom meeting?
Yes, certainly. So for a public hearing, instructions are if you wish to speak and you're using a computer with a microphone, you'll click Raise Your Hand in the participant window, and if you're calling by phone, you press star nine to raise your hand. You can find this information to dial in information on the agenda. If you wish to speak, if you don't wish to speak, you can submit comments using the chat feature. We will monitor the chat the best we can, but speaking is preferred. For any comments, please provide your name as required by Public Act twenty-two dash three. If you do not, if you're only viewing, then you're not required to provide your real name in the, on their video screen. All agenda participation instructions are posted in the chat as well, and you can find them on the agenda.
Thank you. Okay, so I think we're ready for the, the public hearings to begin. Is our first applicant ready? That would be John and Yvette Chambers, applicants and owners, one oh three Cherry Hill Road, special exception for a summer camp. Are they ready to be heard? Okay?
Hi, can you hear us?
Yes, I can.
Hello.
Hello, we're ready.
Yep, we hear you.
How are you? Um, thank you for having us this evening, and we have an application submitted to be accepted to include a summer program on our existing horse farm.
Is there anything else that we'd like to say, or is that it?
Um, there's so much, but I don't know how much talking there is to be done in these meetings, so.
No, make your case.
Okay. Um, so, um, growing up as a multi-generational agricultural advocate in the area, I am the President of the FFA, Future Farmers of America. I'm now an established forage group, and we are looking to be able to offer kids programs in teaching agricultural education here at Fox Field Farm in Branford, Connecticut. This was the town's stables Lucy Hammer established for us, and she wanted to keep it as such. And our family is here to pursue in her name the things that she would have wanted us to do, and that is pursue agricultural education here at Fox Field Farm at one oh three Cherry Hill Road in Branford, Connecticut.
Okay. Very good. Very good. Mikhail, I think you did this staff report, so would you like to?
That's me, actually. I covered that one. Assistant Town Planner did the staff report this time.
Dan, was that you or was it Mikhail?
That's me, no.
Oh, I'm sorry, excuse me, I'm sorry that.
No problem.
I had to get down to that for that one, sorry.
Um, yeah, I'll go ahead and share my screen. Let's see here. All right, can everyone see? Yep. Everyone can see my screen, correct? All right, great. So it's, uh, in R five, the summer camp use will be mostly a natural outgrowth of the existing horse farm. It'll be limited to twelve children only for a few months out of the year, and the camp would have to go through the registering process with the state. Kind of a low intensity use, there's no new construction associated with the application. So the staff recommends that the commission approves it. And that's it, that's it for me.
Just add in the fire department comments?
Right, the Fire Marshal, he, he visited the property on, on, on May first. He basically determined that there's going to be a little bit of a modification to the existing barn area needed to comply. If it was going to be used as a summer camp space, but that would have to go through the, as part of the building department inspection, the Fire Marshal will have their own inspection as well. But other than that, there were no issues that the Fire Marshal raised, but that would just be the one condition is that any comments made by the Fire Marshal would be adhered to.
Thank you, Dan. Are there any Commissioners that have any comments about the application? Anybody? Okay, we don't have anybody, so is there anybody from the public would like to participate? We have anybody? I don't see any hands. Okay, so I would ask the applicant, would you like to say anything else before we close this matter?
Um, I'm very grateful and thank you very much. And it's the applicant, I am Taylor Chambers Gussel of Fox Field Farm LLC, and thank you very much.
Thank you too. Okay, so we'll close this matter and we will vote on it at the end of the public hearings. The next one is Craig Benifore, the applicant, zoning regulation amendment to sections two dot two, four dot eight dot L, and seven point two oh dot B, who had cannabis establishment micro cultivator. Mikhail, I believe you did do this one.
Correct.
So you can enlighten us on this, this application.
All right, so we have Attorney Christopher Russo here.
And, yep, I'm, I'm here, can you hear me okay?
We can.
Great. All right, so I'll start, obviously, so good evening, everybody, for the record. My name is Christopher Russo. I'm a partner at the law firm of Pullman and Comley with an office at ninety State House Square in Hartford, Connecticut. Our firm represents the applicant before you this evening of Five Spring Hill Road LLC. I do know it looked like there was a little error in the agenda. That's actually the property owner listed there. So tonight, we're going to talk about a petition to amend the text of the Town of Branford zoning regulations, and with me tonight is Mr. Tyler Crespo, who is a representative of the applicant. So to provide a little bit of background, the applicant is in the process of purchasing the real property known as forty-five Northeast Industrial Road there in Branford. And the, the plan is Elm City Ag LLC, which is an affiliate of the applicant, currently holds a provisional adult-use cannabis micro cultivator license. And upon purchasing the property, the applicant will be leasing the property to Elm City, under which Elm City will operate a micro cultivator at the property. So in connection with all that, the purpose of the petition is to amend the zoning regulations as they pertain to cannabis establishments, particularly micro cultivators. And to give a little bit of quick background, I'm not sure if everybody had a chance to fully review, but the petition adds cannabis establishment, micro cultivator, and cannabis establishment as definitions to the text. It removes micro cultivators from the cannabis establishment, other definition that is, as it is now going to be independently defined, as long as the text is approved. It adds cannabis establishment, micro cultivator as a special exception use in the IG two zone. And it revises section seven point twenty B to address cannabis establishment, micro cultivator as a separate use. And if we want to talk about the specific text, I would be happy to answer questions or go into greater detail at the end of this presentation. So with that, I just kind of wanted to jump into the plan of conservation and development. So the town's plan of conservation and development, which was effective as of February first, two thousand and nineteen, places great emphasis on economic development, which provides one or more of the following: jobs, income for people, goods and services for people and/or business, and/or net tax revenue to the municipality. And the P O C D does go on to state that both businesses and industrial development should be encouraged to take advantage of Branford's strategic location and provide for jobs, goods, services, and enhance the tax base. A survey completed as part of the P O C D found that fifty-two percent of the residents of Branford want the town to do more in terms of attracting new stores, offices, industries, and other forms of economic development in the town. And, and so in short, in approving the amendment and possibly allowing Elm City Ag to operate a micro cultivator at the property pending special exception approval, if the text is approved, the town will accomplish the goals of the P O C D by benefiting from employment, economic, and tax standpoints. And Elm City Ag's operation of a micro cultivator will allow Elm City Ag the opportunity to employ individuals from Branford and the surrounding region, strengthen and diversify Branford's business portfolio, and provide substantial tax revenue benefits for the town and its residents, which can be reinvested back into the town's community to accomplish the other goals of the P O C D. And I think with that, I thank you for your time and consideration. Myself or Mr. Crespo would be happy to answer questions you have. And on behalf of the applicant, we're excited to work with the town on this project, and we look forward to a successful outcome, so thank you.
Thank you, Attorney Russo. You're, you're, there's another person that's going to speak in behalf, is it, is it, is it Craig?
Craig is the, the property owner, he's just here in support of the application tonight.
Is there anybody else, Attorney Russo, that's going to speak on your behalf tonight?
Um, well, we have Tyler, Mr. Tyler Crespo here, so he could give a little bit of a throw on himself as well.
Okay, fine, if you'd like to speak, feel free to do so.
Okay, good evening, can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Yes, okay, great, my name's Tyler Crespo. As Christopher mentioned, represent Five Spring Hill Drive as well as Elm City Ag. We are a licensed micro cultivator through Connecticut D C P. Looking to pursue a micro cultivation facility located within the back half of forty-five Northeast Industrial. We have gone through a long, arduous process with the D C P and their regulations to end up where we are today, and the fuel behind our goal to bring the micro cultivator license to the Connecticut shoreline. I'm currently a Maine resident, but a Guilford, Connecticut native, born in Bridgeport, grew up in Guilford majority of my life, and moved to California in two thousand and nine to pursue a career in medical cannabis cultivation. Later moved to, back to the East Coast to Maine in two thousand and fifteen, and have been licensed with the Maine Office of Cannabis Policy and under medical cultivation and medical dispensary licenses here in the state of Maine since two thousand and fifteen. I plan to take the industry experience that I've learned throughout the last ten years of operation and hopefully bring it home to the Connecticut shoreline. So I'm here to answer any questions in regards to the topic or impact or, yeah, and anything in regards to the project.
Thank you, Mr. Crespo. Attorney Russo, is, is that it for your, your team, or you have anybody else that wants to speak, or?
Um, that, that's, that's it from our team, and again, we would be happy to answer any questions anybody had after discussion by the, by the commission.
Okay, no problem, because you have that opportunity at the end of the public hearing to do so, if need be. So then I would ask Mikhail to give us a staff report on the.
Thank you, Chairman, I'm, share my screen, so let me know when you see it.
Yes.
All right. So this is a text amendment to allow a new use essentially within the zoning regulations. So the discussion of a particular proposal on a property is a little premature, but obviously the intent is, is to allow something to happen at a particular property on a future date if this is passed. So this amendment allows for a new license to be added to the zoning regulations, a new cannabis establishment license type called micro cultivator. Currently, our regulations only allow one state license to be, to be used within an IG two zone, and the micro cultivator license is another type of state license. So if we adopt this, we're, we're allowing the hybrid retail license, and then we're also allowing micro cultivator license. The micro cultivator license is issued by the state of Connecticut, but they, in order to be able to use it, they need to have that be included in the use table in section four point eight. The use table in section four point eight is where all industrial and commercial uses are listed, and what zones and districts they can be applied for. Currently, we only allow a hydra, hybrid retailer license to be allowed in the IG two zone, and this would just add the micro cultivator to that zone as well. As the attorney for the applicant explained, you know, there's a background within the plan of conservation and development that wants to encourage economic development. Cannabis has been established as a commercial use within the Town of Branford, and we currently have one existing retailer who's in business. So the question really here is, is whether or not this license is a, a, a use that we would like to see included in, in our use table and possibly be open the door for people to apply under that, that use. In order to sort of make an analysis of what, how to approach that, we did send out comments to departments that would be involved in land use decision-making, the police department, Fire Marshal, Town Engineer, Building Official, and all of them either responded with no comments at this time, or just indicated that, like any other commercial use or industrial use, they would have to apply for permits and make sure that they're compliant with those permits, such as fire safety and building code aspects for any development. We also took a look at the amendment criteria, so nine point nine of the zoning regulations, it outlines what we're supposed to do when we're evaluating an amendment to the zoning code. And I, we need to make a decision on whether the commission feels that this is pursuant to Connecticut General Statute, section eight point two three, which basically means is it compliant to your plan of conservation and development. We are looking to protect public health, safety, welfare, and property values. We also look to attain, what's the purpose of attaining these regulations? And in my staff comments, I go through each of these, some of which Attorney Russo mentioned. The other thing when looking at this as a use, what we typically look for is, is this use compatible? And in this respect, I looked at the hybrid retail cannabis use, and wanted to sort of evaluate if, how intensive a use is that compared to the micro cultivator use? A retail store has a lot more traffic and customers that, as any other retail establishment would have. Looking at the Institute of Transportation Engineers, their trip generation manual data, which is the number of trips that are generated by any type of establishment based on the size of the facility. A retail store can typically have in any weekday around forty to sixty trips, so that's essentially customers per thousand square feet. While a smaller scale manufacturer, since they're not customer-driven, like retail customers, you're only going to really expect two to four trips per day per thousand square feet, so it's a much less intensive use from at least a traffic standpoint. That's one aspect of looking at it, there are others. The other aspect is how does this particular use have any impact, positive or negative, on, on surroundings, is it compatible with, with their surroundings? One of the main issues with micro cultivators is actually a known impact of odor or smell can be associated with those if not properly addressed. As a result, in my staff recommendations, I make a suggestion that an additional line be added to the regulations if we adopt this. And you can see that in the, my staff regulations, add a new section twenty point B, point three, point E. All camp establishments shall operate in a manner All cannabis establishments shall operate in a manner to ensure no odor from cannabis or cannabis products is detectable at the property line or beyond. I also make a recommendation that we need to correct the, the numbering that was proposed to reflect what the impact will be with the amendments adopted, so just to revise how the numbering was, was submitted in the, in the application so that it would conform with the, in the zoning text amendment. Those are all the staff comments that I had sent out earlier. I'll stop sharing and happy to answer any questions.
Mikhail, I, I have a question, Fred Russo. Are there any towns, surrounding towns to Branford that have this type of an amendment? Or this type of a business?
I'm not aware of which communities have micro cultivators. I do know the odor comment came about with the referral to SCROG, the Southern Connecticut Regional Council of Governments. I believe maybe North Haven might have a facility because they raised this as an aspect of concern in their community. And we took that input and are passing it on to the commission for consideration.
Thank you. I, I have one other question before I turn it over to the commissioners. The other question is, what is a, a micro cultivator? I'm, I'm totally unfamiliar with the term, what its purpose is, what it does, so if you can enlighten me and anybody else that's unaware of it, I'd appreciate that.
Yeah, I can answer, I'm sure.
Okay.
The applicant will respond as well. It is defined by the state, it is a term, and they have a state definition that goes along with that, but essentially a micro cultivator is authorized to cultivate, grow, propagate, manufacture and package the cannabis plant at an establishment containing not less than two thousand square feet and not more than ten thousand square feet of grow space.
So, does that include or not include retail sales as well, or is that, is this just cultivating cannabis while actually selling it on a retail level?
It is not selling it on a retail level. It is purely for sale, purely for growing for the purpose of selling to other retailers.
Okay, thank you. I'm going to open this up to the other commissioners. Are there any commissioners here that have any questions they'd like to present to the applicant?
Well, not, not to the applicant specifically, this is Joe Chadwick speaking, but I, I would propose that in the add new section, the language to ensure no odor from cannabis or cannabis products, I, I really doubt that under normal circumstances, the cannabis or cannabis products would be detectable, but there could be agricultural processes in the, or the product, means of production that would generate odors. And I, I think that's somewhat more material than just simply, you know, saying cannabis. A lot of people tend to get their backup over that stuff. It's, it's, it's not like, I, I really can't see, just my experience with other similar facilities, you, you, the likelihood of having an agricultural process cause an offending odor is probably a lot greater than just simply smelling dope.
Is that it, Joe?
Yes.
Thank you. Are there any other commissioners who want to add to that? Anybody? Okay, if not, I will ask, is there anybody from the public would like to comment on this application? Anybody from the public? I don't see any raised hands, so I will ask the applicant if he would like to make a closing statement.
Yep. So again, we thank you all for your time and just kind of to expand on the micro cultivator definition a little bit and then I'll, I'll touch on the odor. So Mikhail is correct that it says that it's not less than two thousand square feet and not more than ten thousand square feet of grow space. In, in the staff report, there was one section cutoff that says prior to any expansion authorized by the commissioner of the D C P. So if we were going to want to have the grow space be larger than ten thousand square feet, we would have to apply through them and go through their very robust approval process to do that. And then on the odor, I spoke with Mr. Crespo earlier, we're committed to allowing the language in there and when, and if this text amendment is approved, when we come to the special exception public hearing, we would be coming with a full odor abatement plan for review, a security plan for review, and then all the other kind of regular documents you have to bring along with that for, to get approval. So we would definitely be going more into those items if we could get past this first step.
Thank you, thank you, Attorney Russo. Mr. Crespo, did you have anything else to say or we good with what was been said?
I think we're, we're all on the same page, I think Chris summarized it pretty well. Mikhail gave a pretty accurate perspective on what we're trying to do here.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you guys.
So we'll, we'll close this, we'll close this part of the meeting out. Yes. Joe?
Sorry, Joe Russo, I have a question.
I'm sorry, Joe, go ahead.
I'm just wondering what, what kind of facility are we talking about? Is this a, an enclosed facility with lights and water and all that, or is this a greenhouse type of thing? What kind of a facility are we looking at?
So I'll, I'll respond and then Tyler, if you want to add anything, please feel free. So it's a fully enclosed commercial building, all the grow happens on the inside, the packaging and the harvesting and everything, it's all, it's all inside, it's not done outside for public view, it's all done behind security measures and whatnot, so you will not see anything from the building.
Well, it's grown under, under grow lights and all that sort of thing and ventilation is, is going to be a situation where you have to have fans or something to, for the heat or, or for, or for cold, so how are you going to ventilate this place? And, and is it going to go into the air and what kind of odor are we talking about?
Tyler, I'll let you comment on that because you know the systems better than I.
Yep, I'd be glad to help. So the property in, in subject here is a concrete block building for security measures that will help quite a bit. It has been used historically by Isoplexus and Kenusha Hirstman, Isoplexus using it for pharmaceutical lab R and D. So the building has very robust security measures already, including R F I D chips and door access to all of the rooms. So the initial build out essentially will be very low impact, there'll be no structural alter, alterations, just partitioning rooms constructed within the existing infrastructure. Those partitioning rooms, we use what is called a SIPs panel, which is a structural insulated panel, it's similar to that of a cold storage or walk-in freezer. They also build bridges out of it, they're very structurally sound, but it's a high R value secured by sheeted metal on either side. That allows us for the ability to really have a precision environment, so we use high profile H V A C to manipulate positive and negative air pressures within the building to force air that's contaminated in theory with VOCs, what they call it, a volatile organic compound, or terpene is what is off gassing into the air. And we force the, you know, air using positive, negative pressure through a series of a kind of multifaceted approach for odor mitigation. We use carbon filtration as well as what is called bipolar ionization. It's the same sterilization technology that NASA uses in all of their R and D facilities. I'm sure labs like Isoplexus also incorporate the technology, but it binds active carbon molecules to U V lighting and positively charges the environment to eliminate the pressure formed from the VOCs evaporating in the air. We then scrub that air through activated carbon and activated charcoal filters. So none of the air from the grow environment actually leaves the, the, the part, sub, the sub constructions within. It's what we call a sealed environment type of grow. And we use typical conventional industrial H V A C to cool that space and then high velocity greenhouse fans to manipulate and move the air around to recirculate it within the environment. So the overall impact of the odor outside of the building should be minimal and then that of, at the property line should be benign.
What's your average temperature that you need to maintain to grow this product?
It depends on the stage of growth of the plants. The plants, there's three different primary stages of growth, they all vary slightly in relative humidity and target temperature, but the solid average is an average of about seventy degrees and fifty percent humidity, which is pretty easy for us to maintain using dehumidification, humidification where necessary, and then H V A C.
I'm, I'm concerned about when we have these ninety plus degree days with a hot sun, how are you going to cool this building enough and, and how are you going to filter enough that these odors don't get more pungent than, than you're talking about?
So I guess for reference, I do currently operate a business and own majority share equity in Ripple Wellness LLC. We are vertically integrated here in the state of Maine, run a twenty thousand square foot manufacturing cultivation distribution facility in Saco, Maine, as well as one dispensary in Saco and one dispensary in Biddeford. We've been licensed at this facility for ten years using a similar odor abatement plan and have had historically zero odor complaints in regards to our production manufacturing facility. So we plan to utilize the same procedures, both staff training and also infrastructure wise to ensure that, you know, we're not only compliant at the state level, but also ensuring a positive impact to our host community.
All right. Appreciate the education, thank you.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Joe. If there are no more questions, I'll ask one more time, anybody else have a question?
There's a, yeah, someone put something in the chat.
Yeah, so Fred, I'm going to read the questions from How to Go writer. Does the Mike, the Connecticut micro cultivator license, would you be operating under, require all of the air mitigation and scrubbing you described, or is it just the way your particular business does it? I think they're asking whether or not your Connecticut requires this air quality mitigation or are you writing?
I do, I do understand the question and for short, no, the D C P does not require this level of air quality and filtration. However, they do have mandatory lab testing requirements that our product does uphold. Part of that is microbial contaminants and that is a huge reason why we maintain such a high level of cleanliness and high level of, you know, air ventilation purification within our workspace is to deliver exceptionally clean product to the end consumer.
And then just to kind of expand on Tyler's comment, so I've, I've worked on a number of these applications in and throughout the state of Connecticut, so yes, the D C P doesn't go as far as talking about air quality standards, but like, like you all on the commission, you, you see this come up in this various zoning regulations throughout the state of Connecticut. So that's, that's kind of how it's dealt with and then when you have high quality operators like Tyler and his team, you, you will see that the, the methods they use are, are, are very good and they're, they're first class. So you addressing it in the zoning regulations is kind of where the air quality in odor abatement comes into play.
I don't see any other questions or raised hands.
Okay, so then we will close this.
I have a question, sorry about that.
Marcy, okay, Marcy, go ahead.
Maybe I missed it, but I'm just curious about the air, the coverage area that this micro brewery would serve and generally how many, like where the next micro breweries are located, you know, geographically from this point? Basically, how did you pick Branford as the place to set up the, you know, the services? You're from Maine and, and all of that.
Yep, so in short, I'm originally from Guilford, Connecticut, my family still resides in Guilford and this has been a lifelong goal of mine to operate within the legal market back in the Connecticut shoreline area. And then on top of the question of geographically and demographically, what markets we serve, we are licensed in Maine and have been for the last ten years with the end goal of, you know, national expansion and obviously coming home to our family in Connecticut. But then B, past that, there are only currently seven licensed cultivators within the state of Connecticut and only eighteen provisional license holders. So if all of us manage to pursue a final active license, there may only be a total of twenty-four licenses throughout the entire state of Maine, so the twenty-four producers or less will service the, the entire state of Connecticut, my apologies, will service the entire demand for cannabis, recreational cannabis throughout the state. So Branford, this property was highlighted throughout a long-term search and it does fit the criteria quite well. The location is ideal among the existing infrastructure that allows for very plug and play scenario, so it does seem to check all the boxes and is in the existing I G two zone and that's where, you know, we thought it would be a cohesive fit within the town.
Where is the next closest one, out of curiosity?
Chris, maybe you could help highlight that, I know the cultivations.
Yeah, I think there's, there might be one in North Haven, I know of a very large grow operation in Rocky Hill, Connecticut, that one's, that's a full cultivator site, that's not a micro cultivator, so I believe that one's like a hundred thousand plus square feet. So a, a very different animal. So the micro cultivator, it's a, it's a pretty small operation in the grand scheme of things. And so, yeah, I think there is one in North Haven and I'm not sure of the other provisional license holders where they're going, I do not actively represent them.
Do you know how this, the size of this one compares to North Haven? Are they comparable?
I believe it's another micro cultivator, so the, you're, you're set within the parameters of D C P, so it could, it has to be two, at least was it, two thousand square feet and then to start it's ten thousand and then if you go through again the robust license measures that D C P has, you can, a micro cultivator can be up to twenty-five thousand. And that's, that's when you hit another threshold and you would have to expand to be a full cultivator. So they're probably, I would comfortably say they're between two and ten thousand.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Marcy. Is there any other commissioner that has a question for the applicant?
I have, I have one more, one or two more questions.
Go ahead, Joe.
Do you ever have, run across a, an insect problem or a plant disease problem and if you do, how do you, how do you work that, how do you control that?
That's you, Tyler.
Yep, so that, that's a very broad spectrum question, obviously with any agriculture, there's pathogen pressures, what we call it in agricultural industry. Pathogen pressure can come from insects, bacteria, pretty much any, you know, foreign matter within the cultivation space. Being an indoor cultivator, we kind of pride ourselves on what we call precision agriculture and maintaining a very precise kind of clean room status, almost pharmaceutical grade, surely a food grade operation. Part of this is very tight and very refined standard operating procedures and training methodologies. So the way we cultivate is from a clone or from a tissue culture, which So the way we cultivate is from a clone or from a tissue culture, which tissue culture is uh a microbiology science uh approach to basically a genetic duplicate, but it's happening within uh purified, clean space and under uh sanitized conditions. So we're starting with clean plants every single round. And then our procedures, the the in our closed and sealed environments, there should never be internal pathogen pressure. Uh the only risks really come from employees and, you know, failure to follow staff training or standard operating procedure when it comes to uh you know, de-garming. There's specific garments and specific attire that is worn only within the facility and sent out for cleaning every week. And so as long as our procedures are abided by pest and pathogen pressures, not of a giant concern. I am a licensed pesticide applicator and I've been licensed in the state of Maine for commercial pesticide applications for the last eight years. I've only had to use a pesticide application three times over the course of that eight years, and it was on precautionary measures and not on a uh consumable crop. So I feel confident in our existing procedures and our ability to prevent pathogen pressure uh in its entirety.
Thank you.
Thank you, Joe. Are there any other commissioners that have a question before we close the public hearing? Nobody, no chats? Let me just check that. No chats. Okay. So we're gonna close this public hearing now and probably vote on it uh after the public hearings are all all finished. Uh we have a third uh public hearing, uh a Chance for Love Rescue Incorporated, care of Adriana Pepe, applicant. Hadlo LLC owner, fifty three East Industrial Road, Unit One. Special exception for animal shelter for cats. Is the applicant ready?
Hi, I'm ready. Good evening.
Go ahead, Ms. Pepe.
Okay, um so my name is Adriana Pepe and I am the founder of a Chance for Love Rescue. A Chance for Love Rescue is a one hundred percent volunteer, five oh one C three nonprofit organization um that was founded in two thousand sixteen and we became incorporated in two thousand twenty two. Um each year, the number of cats we provide assistance to grows with last year assisting roughly one hundred and fifty cats. We currently have three programs, which are our foster program for cats that we rescue until they are homed. ATNR program, um and that stands for trap neuter return of feral cats. And we also have a resident cat program, um and that is for cats that we rescue and we find out they have significant medical issues. And they are not candidates for adoption, so they are cared for in a foster home setting for their lifetime. Um we are requesting approval for a special exception permit for an animal shelter to make fifty three East Industrial Road, Unit A one, our central home to better assist or rescue efforts of caring for Connecticut's felines. The need for us to have a central location as we grow is very great, um as we have seen an increasing number of cats abandoned or in need of care, and we cannot sustainably operate on foster homes alone any longer to help these cats. Um there are no changes to the unit and all of the cats will be kept indoors. The space is eight hundred square feet and we do not anticipate on housing more than ten to twelve cats at a time. All of the cats will be up to date on state mandated vaccinations, spayed or neutered, tested for disease and dewormed. The cats will be cared for in shifts by volunteers and open to the public by appointment. The shelter will be licensed by the Department of Agriculture and subject to inspection.
Is that it? Ms. Pepe? Okay, thank you very much. Uh well, then I'm gonna ask Mikell to read, I'm sorry, excuse me, this is Dan's uh report. So Dan, can you give us a report on the uh the applicant?
Absolutely. And I'll share my screen. Can everyone see?
Yeah.
How about now?
Good.
Yep.
Okay. Alrighty. So uh fifty three East Industrial Road, um you can see on the map here, it's a, in in unit, um unit one and building A. Uh an industrial zone IG two, um no new construction is included in this application or is necessary. It, there's an aerial view of the property. Um it conforms with the P O C D um through, you know, maintaining and enhancing community facilities, which includes public safety, the animal shelter will work towards this goal by uh taking feral cats off the, off the, off the streets and into an environment where they can be treated and cared for appropriately. Again, uh they're applying for a special exception for the use of uh animal shelter. Uh commercial kennel is kind of grouped in with that sometimes, but it's not um applicable in this scenario because commercial kennels only apply to dogs. This shelter will be strictly for cats only. The only uh comments uh that raise any um concerns from the other departments was from the town engineer. And that was just um at the time of the tenant fit up application. Uh they'll want some more information on how they'll manage uh pet hair for their washing operations. Um and that would again be part of the tenant fit up application down the road, following any kind of special exception approval. Um so the staff, um with all that information uh in mind, the staff recommends that planning and zoning commission approve the the special exception application for the use of animal shelter at fifty three East Industrial. That's it for me.
Thank you, Dan. Do any commissioners have any comments uh for the applicant? Anybody? Okay, we have none. I'll ask again, is there any commissioner that has a question about this application? Uh okay, if not, um is there anybody from the public that would like to talk in behalf of this application? Anybody who would like to discuss this application? Don't see anybody. Is that? I'm not sure. I, I see an Ashley.
Hi, sorry. I'm in the car. I can't raise my hand.
That's okay.
Ashley Borzansky. Um Adriana is a really good friend of mine and a great person. Um she's helped me a lot with a lot of cats. Um we became very close. Uh I'm one of the fosters right now, uh um because no, the location's not in the play yet. Um but she's helped me with so many cats and we've gotten so many cats adopted and into good homes. Um I can't say any more good things other than I really hope this pulls through because it's gonna be a great thing.
Is that it? Ashley?
That's it.
Thank you very much.
Yes, that's it.
Okay, is there anybody else that wants to say something?
Hi, can I say something?
Yeah, please identify who you are.
Yes, so my name is Cheryl De Filippo and I oversee the Greater New Haven Cat Project. Another five oh one C three um cat rescue organization. We're currently based in New Haven. And um I I just want to, I want to sort of um enhance what Ashley um had had just stated and also to confirm what Adriana had presented. But also to say that um I've been overseeing my organization for the past twenty five years. And being in a physical location lends credibility to the organization. And when you have better credibility, you're able to apply for more funding for spay neuter resources or foster care resources, which can only help the animals, the cats, that you're trying to find homes for or to get spayed or neutered, you know, or the feral cats that are being T N R'd. Um it's a, it can only have a positive impact on the community. I'm sure Adriana, you know, would do collaborations with, you know, community events and whatnot. And um it could only have a positive impact on your town to just have her and her organization have a a solid presence in Branford. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Chairman, do you have a question in the chat?
Oh, go ahead.
Uh David McKay, this will be for the applicant. Do the cats have any outside time? If so, where?
Hi, no, um the cats will be housed strictly indoors.
Can we have any other questions? You, I don't see any. I'll, I'll ask again, is there anybody for public input to this on this application? If not, I I have one question though. Is the organization self-funded or just how is it that they uh pay their bills?
So a five oh one C three is funded majority by public donations or grants. So majority of our um donations come from private individuals that donate towards our cause.
And you should be commended for doing that.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else that has a, a question? Or like to add to this conversation? If not, I'm going to close the public hearing and um move on to the next step, which is voting on these uh these three applications. Uh I I just want to, before we begin that deliberation, I want to uh make sure uh that Sharon Hutner is, yes, she's there. I see her coming on.
I'm here.
Okay, Sharon, you know, you're, you're, you're gonna be on.
I'm in line to vote.
Okay, good. Just to make sure uh that you're, you're on board. Okay, so I guess what we can do is start the public deliberation of this. And um I I guess we should start with the first one, which is the John and Yvette Chambers application. And okay, is there anything we should know with either findings or conditions um on, on your, oh, this is Dan. I'm sorry, excuse me, Dan, on your report?
Yeah, the only uh conditions were just that the comments provided by the fire marshal in terms of modifications to the barn space uh be complied with at the time of the inspection down the road. That's part of the building department.
Yeah, Dan, why don't you um share your screen so they can see the findings and the the conditions? So they know what they're voting on.
Absolutely. Just one second. Right. Scroll down here. So the findings were subject to compliance with the conditions listed below. The summer camp is consistent with the special exception requirements in the zoning regulations, the conditions, the first one that the special exception would have an effective date of today, September fourth. Um and the other condition that all comments and conditions provided by the fire marshal must be complied with.
Thank you. Uh okay, so I think we can vote on this. So I'm gonna ask if, uh for a, someone to make a, uh, a ask for a motion to approve. Can I get a motion? Joe, Bayuso approves the motion. Do we have a second?
Joe Chadwick seconds.
Joe Chadwick seconds. Okay, let's go through the roll. Joe Bayuso. How do you vote?
I move uh to approve.
Okay, Joe Chadwick?
Joe Chadwick votes to approve.
Marcy Pelosi?
Marcy Pelosi votes to approve.
Sharon?
I think this is a great opportunity for children to have in Branford to get closer to nature. So I approve.
And I'm Fred Russo and I approve. So that application has been approved. Um congratulations to the applicants.
Thank you all so much.
Thank you guys so much.
Okay, all set. Uh second one is the zoning regulation. Mikell, you wanna go over that?
Yes, I'll share my screen. So the findings are that we would consider that um they are compatible with this plan of conservation development. And then we find that the amendment uh is in accordance with the comprehensive plan and consistent with the plan of conservation development. There are two uh required changes, um that should be part of the motion. Uh one is that the seven point twenty point B, point three, point B should actually read seven point twenty point B, point three, point A, and revise the Roman numerals that were listed in the applicant's amendment. Um Roman numerals four, five, six to one, two, three Roman numerals. And then we are going to add, which is not included in their application, but add the following section. Seven twenty point B, three E, that all cannabis establishments shall be operated in a manner to ensure no odor from cannabis or cannabis products is detectable at the property line or beyond. And then we seek that this amendment, if approved, would be, have an effective date of September twenty second, two thousand twenty five.
Okay, thank you. Um so I will then ask for a, a roll call again. Uh and ask for someone to make a motion to approve this application.
Chadwick makes that motion.
Pro, uh motion made by Joe Chadwick. Do we have a second?
Sharon Hutner will second.
Sharon, I think you were first, so we're gonna give you.
Okay, Sharon Hutner will second.
Okay, thank you, Sharon. Uh okay, let's go through and see who votes on what. Joe Bayuso?
Joe Bayuso moves to approve.
Joe Chadwick?
Chadwick moves to approve.
Marcy Pelosi?
Marcy moves to approve.
Sharon?
Sharon moves to approve.
And Fred Russo, I approve as well. So that motion is carried. The uh, the third application is uh the one for a Chance for Love Rescue.
Yep, I'll go ahead. Yep, I'll go ahead and share my screen. Alright, uh the findings were subject to compliance with the conditions listed below. Um animal shelter use is consistent with the special exception requirements in the zoning regulations. Conditions being that special exceptions will have an effective date of today, September fourth, twenty twenty five. And all comments and conditions provided by the fire marshal were just that our marshal uh would perform an inspection as a standard through the tenant fit up uh process and the town engineer's comments about uh information regarding hair going down the drains uh must be complied with.
Okay. If we're done with that, then I will ask for a motion to approve this application.
Joe Bayuso moves to approve.
Joe approves. Will someone uh second the emotion, uh the motion?
Chadwick seconds.
Joe Chadwick seconds it. And uh Joe Bayuso?
Joe Bayuso approves.
Joe Chadwick?
Chadwick approves.
Marcy?
Marcy approves.
Sharon?
Sharon approves.
Fred Russo, I approve. So that uh is, we're finished with the uh the public hearings. Uh the next order of business is new business. And um I guess, Mikell, do you have anything that we should know about new business?
Yes, so item one, um we are still waiting for the state DEP um review. Uh it was submitted to them in August eighteenth, so uh September eighteenth. Um we will revisit it under old business. Um so we don't have to uh discuss that tonight. We're still waiting on the three days to expire. As item two is the text amendments for, from staff or as a commission app uh application to make amendments to section two point two, six point H C, nine point six K and nine point six L. Uh this is to be received and we're recommending a public hearing be scheduled for October ninth.
Anything else?
Um third item is another uh text amendment regulation for landscaping under six point three. Are also seeking to have a text amendment or a public hearing be scheduled for October ninth. Uh the fourth item is a special exception request uh for a convenience store uh and accessory apartment over the convenience store. Uh this is actually a continuation of the caretaker's apartment conversation that you had in uh March or April. Uh those, so they're actually going forward to seek uh to codify that request. Um seeking a public hearing to be scheduled October ninth. And then last item is uh thirty nine Prospect Hill Road. Um this is a special exception and coastal site plan review for accessory structure. Um and for grading, uh uh we are seeking to have a We are seeking to have a public hearing be set for October 9th. There'll be four public hearings for that, that evening. We could also make it October 23rd if you feel four is too many. But, right now, we're going for October.
Joe Vayuso?
Mention everything October 9th. Do we have a meeting, the next meeting is September?
We already have an agenda with three public hearings scheduled. I'm trying to keep the agenda somewhat manageable.
I wonder if there was something going on that there was not going to be any meeting, which, all right, now I know.
Yeah, we scheduled a bunch of things in July for September 29th or 2018th. All right, so those are the public hearing schedules, so we'll do October 9th. If there's any questions on those, otherwise we can move forward to the next item on the agenda.
Okay, the next, the next item on the agenda are the minutes. There are four sets of minutes that you received in the packet. They were June 19th, July 10th, July 24th and July 30th. And having a discussion, Mikell, about this, whether we had to approve them individually or we could do it as a, as a single unit, Mikell agreed that it would be, I think, okay to do it as one vote for the four minutes. If, if anybody has any questions about those minutes, then let's discuss them now. So does anybody have any questions about the minutes? Joe? Joe Vayuso?
Oh, I'm fine.
Okay, I would say, well, if there are no questions, then I, I would ask for someone to make a motion to approve the minutes as they've been sent to us.
Marcy will make that motion.
I think Joe got in there first, Marcy, so we'll give it to Joe.
I'll second.
Okay, give it to Marcy and Joe will take the second.
Should we, should we list the four dates?
I did, but I'll do, I did, but I'll do them again. There, there's July 19th, 2025, July 10th, 2025, July 24th, 2025 and July 30th, 2025. Those are the four sets of minutes that we're going to vote on.
The first was June 19th.
June. Say that again, Marcy.
You just misread, read it, it's June 19th.
I'm sorry, June 19th and then July 10th and July 24th and July 30th, so I stand corrected. So can, I have a motion for, for approving these minutes.
We already have a motion. I motioned and Joe Vayuso seconded, so.
So let's take the vote.
I vote to approve. Marcy votes to approve.
Let's go with Joe Vayuso.
Joe Vayuso approves.
Joe Chadwick?
Chadwick approves.
Marcy?
I approve.
Sharon?
Sharon approves.
Fred Russo approves, so the four sets of minutes have been approved. The next item on the agenda is correspondence and I'll leave that to Mikell to discuss those correspondence.
Yep, so we received two items of correspondence, cell tower and tenant replacement at, it's a notification required by the state occurring at 723 Leets Island Road, where an existing one already exists. And then Connecticut DEEP correspondence regarding dock construction at 286 Linden Avenue. No other correspondence.
Okay, thank you very much. The next item on the agenda is old business. Again, can I have to rely on you for this?
Yep, so these are public hearings for the next meeting, so in two weeks and, and they, they say to construct six residential units, they're mending their application currently and they're having the re-notice, so, so long as they can get the re-notice done in time, we'll still have a September 18th hearing, otherwise it may be pushed off.
Okay, thank you, Mikell. And the last item on the agenda is other business and again, Mikell, if you could listen on this.
So there's two items listed there, I actually have three. The first is, is a announcement that the Department of Planning and Zoning and the Department of Inland Wetlands and Natural Resources are merging. I'll be the new director and then Jamie Fredericks will be the deputy director of this department. As you also might know, Jane Ellis resigned and is now working in North Haven and we are currently in the process, and we actually made an offer to an individual to fill the zoning enforcement officer position. It will be a combined position of zoning and wetlands enforcement. That person is asked to give us a definitive response tomorrow and so we might have a, a new person in that role hopefully shortly. I think it's looking positive. And then finally, I sent out an email about commissioner training. There are a numerous amount of trainings being made available in October and November. If any of those are listed in that email, please let me know. There is one that does require a registration fee and the town is happy to pay for that. There is obviously requirement to have four hours of training done at least every four years, so I don't know where you are with your hours. If any of you need to fill in hours, this is a good opportunity to do so. Happy to answer any questions.
Um, Mikell?
We'll be sending out an email about the merger, so you guys can have a bit more information, but we did, I did talk to Chuck and a couple other committee chairman. Yes, Marcy?
In the past, you had tracked our hours and when they would be up, so there should be something somewhere to that.
Yeah, I will look.
Because I really have no idea where I'm at.
Okay. Michelle and I talked about it this afternoon, she, we do know that there's something somewhere, we will find it.
Yeah, I'll check tomorrow. It might be in Harry's secret vault.
Maybe. All right.
Any other, any other comments before I ask for the meeting to be adjourned? If not, I will ask someone to make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
I'll make that motion. Marcy's here.
And do we have a second?
Chadwick, seconds.
Joe Chadwick, seconds, motion. And I'll ask Joe Vayuso.
Joe Vayuso approves.
Joe Chadwick?
Chadwick approves.
Marcy?
Marcy approves.
Sharon?
Sharon approves.
And Fred Russo approves. I, I just want to have a closing comment. Thank you all for being patient. You know, Chuck not being here, I, I probably miss him more than anybody, quite honestly, but I, I'm happy to do the, do the job as best I can, but I make no claim to have done as well as Chuck does. So thank you again for your patience, your time and the staff as well, and if I'm called to do it again, I will. And each time I do it, you guys make the job a little bit easier, so thank you very much.
You did a great job, Fred.
Good night all.
I second that. Thanks, Fred, for stepping up and taking over.
No problem. Thank you.
Appreciate it. Have a good night.
Everyone.
Recording stopped.
This program was brought to you in part through the support of the Town of Branford. Watch town meetings and other videos on demand at branfordtv.org.